Last meeting of December, we only have one meeting this month and we appreciate everybody in our council chambers who are here and also those of you watching this on our Electric City Television. The emigration tonight will be given by Councilman Rick Lockridge and respects to the flag will be given by Councilmember Matt Harbin. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts but at the same time joy in our hearts as well. We thank you for all the good things that our city manager has done for us. We ask you to bless, bless him for his 39 years of service to our community. He's done so much for our city, he's done so much for our community. We appreciate all he's done. We thank you for Linda, his assistant, who will soon be his, take his position. We ask you to bless her and bless David McEwen as they take on the many challenges this city has. We thank you for each member of this council, for the care that they give to their community and the people that live in it. We thank you for this country and we ask a special blessing during this season of Christmas, that you give us peace. It's a very troubled world, Lord, and we ask you to give us peace. Now, thank you again for the opportunity to serve on this council and thank you again for all that you've done for us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with our meeting tonight, we do have a special recognition and we had somewhat of a special recognition last week at our employee Christmas luncheon where everybody, most of the people in the organization got a chance to come and celebrate John Moore's retirement. And tonight, we get another chance. This is actually his last meeting and I don't know how many he had, but he's done a lot of them. And I think probably, and I think I can speak for our entire council in saying that John is, is the epitome of professionalism when it comes to his job. John believed in having a strong council and he always wanted his council to be together and I can say that we are together, we always have been. We don't agree to, on everything, but we're always very respectful to disagree in a very respectful way. And a lot of that has to do with John's leadership. As Rick said in his prayer, John has been important in so many aspects of city government over his nearly 40 years of service to our community, but also in the community. You know, I'd hate to thank the countless boards and committees that he's been on when he didn't have to be on them and when we took him away from Becky during the evenings and things that, that he had to do that, that he didn't get paid for, but he did it just because he, he loved this community. And so, we all gonna miss him and I, I think we all respect him and for what he did during the course of his tenure here at the city. I've got a couple, got a proclamation that, you know, these are things that, that, that individuals in the community wanted to do for John. And this proclamation actually comes from Anderson University and it comes from their president, Evans Whitaker. And the proclamation reads, whereas John Moore, native son of city of Anderson, began his distinguished career with the city in December of 1976. And whereas John Moore served as city finance director from 1983 to 1991. And whereas John Moore officially served as city manager of Anderson for over 20 years. And whereas John laid the groundwork for several major projects, including the Recreation Center, Carolina Renn Park, and the Municipal Building Center, Business Center. And whereas John Moore was a master consensus builder, working diligently with council and community members. And whereas John Moore has been a faithful member of St. John's United Methodist Church. And whereas John Moore has served his community in numerous roles with the Chamber of Commerce, the YMCA, the United Way, Innovate Anderson and Partners for a Healthy Community. And where John Moore's leadership has impacted and greatly enhanced the city's well-being that has in turn enhanced Anderson University. And whereas John Moore has left a lasting legacy that will long be remembered, well beyond Anderson and South Carolina. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees, the Board of Regents, the Board of Visitors, and the Ministerial Board of Interests do recognize and commend John Moore on this day of his retirement for his professional contributions and his dedicated service to the cities, citizens of the city of Anderson and sincerely thank him for his many years of service this 23rd day of November 2015. Evans Peter Whitaker, President of Anderson University. And this is a congressional record presented by our US Senator Tim Scott. And it's entitled, "John Moore Jr.'s Retirement." Says, "Mr. President, today I wish to acknowledge and honor the outstanding work of John R. Moore Jr. of Anderson, South Carolina, for his positive impact on the city. Throughout his over 30 years of exceptional duty, Mr. Moore has greatly enhanced the operations of the city through his hard work and dedication. John began his journey as a city employee in 1976 and has gone above and beyond the call of duty and since, and call of duty since then, to be a positive addition to city leadership. Displaying a genuine passion to work towards improving the lives of Anderson citizens, John has dedicated much of his career to public service. Appointed to city finance director in 1983 and then to city manager in 1991, Mr. Moore has continuously done his due diligence to produce great results. Mr. Moore has taken an active interest in the welfare of the community through his roles in the Chamber of Commerce, local YMCA, United Way, and other public service organizations. I acknowledge with pleasure the legacy of service that Mr. John R. Moore will be retiring with, and thank him for his effort that will undoubtedly benefit the city of Anderson for years to come. Tim Scott." And now, I think I've got Linda McConnell is gonna come up with a few parting gifts here.
By the time I figure, I've been watching this for 30 years. Well, John, we certainly thank you for the positive impact that you've had on the city of Anderson. And for that, we're all appreciative, but we also, I thank you for your tireless professionalism, your guiding hand and encouraging hand. And we want to make sure that you have a few things to remember, Scott, but I think you must have offered a friendship and so you don't forget us. We have... Oops, close.
That's nice.
I'm not quite following up, but this is evidence of some, just some of the projects that you've been instrumental in putting on the ground in the city of Anderson to position us for our future and we thank you. And one last thing, everybody knows that retiring employees get a little bag. Well, this little bag is gonna help you relax and also turn to the next chapter in your book of life. So we, you don't have to open it now, but Becky, you might have dibs on part of this.
Enough tissues for a speech, so I did all that Thursday, so use the second time around a little better, but it has been a distinct honor and privilege to serve with all of you.
Okay, the minutes of our November 9th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. B. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of November 9th pass unanimously. We have one item of old business and that item is request second and third reading of ordinance 15-12 establishing the April 2016 general election. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Y'all gave first reading of this at your last meeting. It does establish the election for April 5th, 2016. This election will be for seats 2, 4, 6, and at large seat 8. And the main thing is I would keep in mind for all of you, hope you'll file again, that will be Thursday, starting Thursday, January 21st at noon and expire on Thursday, February 4th at noon. That'll be the filing period. So, Mr. Mayor, we'd recommend that you approve this on second and third reading.
Any comments, questions?
I make a motion to approve on second reading.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
I move that we pass it on the third reading.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Thank you. We got four items of new business and the first item is request consideration of a resolution authorizing signatures for financial accounts. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this really lets you know you done here, doesn't it? The city code does require that there be two signatures on all expenditure checks by the city, that being the city manager and the finance director. So this resolution will authorize your new city manager, Linda McConnell, and then still Peggy, Max was the finance director, to sign all expense checks, payroll. We recommend you approve this resolution authorizing those two to be your authorized signatures.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions?
Make a motion, we accept it.
First by the mayor pro temp, the second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Our next item is request consideration of capital improvement plan purchases. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in the audience, we have any of these items that you have questions on, we have everyone from Kerry who put the list together, working with the division heads about any of the vehicles or equipment and their uses. But what you're being asked tonight, well, let me go, before I go there, let me thank you again, two years ago, when you redid your budget, you put the city on a sound path for capital replacement at that time and that continues to serve us well. And this is kind of the second round of those purchases. What you have tonight is $643,627 worth of equipment. It breaks down as following. The general fund is $317,0310. The storm water fund, $46,001, whoops, excuse me, $263,729 for storm water, $46,154 hospitality, and then $16,434 for the water. In every case, we are proposing that the equipment that will be replaced will be sold on govdeals.com. There's a couple of exceptions and I don't want to get into all those, but the street sweeper will keep the one we have. It's, it's the same make and model, older obviously for a backup. That is an important part of the storm water program. And then, we do have a request under consideration for the career campus to get a couple of our hand-me-down police cars as they teach some criminal justice courses there. I think it'd be a good, good opportunity to work within the community. So what you have, and I'll try to do this real quick, in the police department, we have one Ford Explorer for the forensic unit and most everything unless I tell you otherwise is a state contract price. We also have the second round of replacement police vehicles. We're asking for four, you asked for four the last times, that's eight total for this year. And those are also state contract, they're Dodge Chargers, identical to what you have now. They'll be coming from Butler Chrysler Dodge, a state contractor. For the fire department, we have two fully equipped Tahos. So the Tahoe is for the fire, it replaced the one the chief uses, but it has all the equipment for a fire scene. That's why its price is a little bit more at 44,285. It is also a state contract from Love Chevrolet. Good news for our sanitation, we continue to build that fleet back up. You've already ordered four new trucks, well, not in order, they're on the streets. So for our trash crews, we have two Ford New Holland Tractors with the 4-in-1 buckets. You see those at 119. The state contract is Old Stone Ford, Old Stone Tractor Company. We also have, we're thank, we got Chris Eberhart, engineer, does a lot of in-house work, so he's been using his own equipment for most of the time. So we'd like to get him geared up with his engineering equipment. I won't go into all the details, but that is $30,00926. And so the general fund, again, $317,309. I know I'm moving quickly. Recreation, which is now funded by hospitality, two trucks, one Ford F-150 half-ton and one Chevrolet 1500 half-ton, it's a regular cab on that one. You can see those prices, 26 and 20, $46,154. And then for storm water, we have a Explorer that we would purchase from state contract, Vic Bailey Ford, $28,650. And the big purchase item, which we have a lot of demand for and certainly helps us meet our storm water requirements, will be a new Johnson street sweeper, $235,079. And you can see the bids, that is the low bid for that piece of equipment. And the final piece we have is, in our daily meter reading and other activities regarding the meter reading, we use the small pickup truck, so the state contract this year is with Nissan, Benson Nissan, $16,434. So that, excuse me, is the recommendation from the staff to purchase those pieces of equipment. They are all funded in the budget and the monies are available.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I have one quick question. I noticed the, the F-150 half-ton crew cab, I just want to make sure it's not like the police animal control vehicle, the truck we just bought, because in that crew cab, there's just no room whatsoever for people to sit in the back. And I know this is used in a recreation and I know they usually transport three or four people when they go to different ball fields. I just want to make sure they are, the room in the back to transport the crews around.
This is for our yard staff to pick up trash.
That's all, it's trash. Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Currie.
Do any of these have like a locator device on them, like a LoJack or something, in case they get stolen?
These are GM vehicles, they're on start, reactivate, and they can be put on any of the vehicles.
They can be, but this wouldn't be included here.
Not included in these prices, Mr.?
We do use some GPS to help us in sanitation, routing and that kind of thing, but, so I don't know that any of these would necessarily have that. That could be an option though, 'cause we have a GPS system to track vehicles on their route.
For $15, you can buy a tracker device. You replace the battery once a year and you can track the vehicle anywhere it goes for 15 bucks.
Yep, that's what we use on our others.
I do have one.
Mr. Chapman.
Yeah. I got one of them. The only thing that I had a question on is, is the two Ford Explorers, they're both from Vic Bailey, but there's about $1,500 difference between the two state contracts. What, what was the purpose of that?
The one for the storm water is gonna have a trailer towing package. It also has a compartment in the back to store the equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
May, I make a motion, we accept it as approved.
I second.
First by the mayor pro temp, second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
My next item, my third item is request consideration of a contract for sewer line project on Shockley Ferry Road. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask Jeff Caldwell if he'll make his way to the podium in case you have any questions. This is a major expenditure, but it also is an emergency types. We do have a sewer line failure and it's described in the backup. It goes under Shockley Ferry Road and unfortunately under the railroad. Right now, we have temporarily cut that off and we're running a pump. As you see Jeff, it's about $14,000, $4,000 a month to run the pump, plus overtime, somebody keep the gas filled up. And it is a critical line in our system, serves thousands of customers, so it does need to be replaced. Jeff has worked awfully hard, he's looked at a couple of alternatives, but in the end, we would recommend that we bore under Shockley Ferry and the railroad, 225 linear feet of bores. He can, he can talk about what the values are. We talked to a local contractor who's done a good bit of work for us, Morehead, but then Jeff is also, in this short time, to meet our time period, Morehead is the only one who can mobilize and go. We've talked, I think, three or four others that do the, these type of bores and even though they can't commit to the timeframe, they've given us some unit prices. So there is no bid process for this kind of emergency, but I think Jeff would tell you from his experience and talking to other contractors, we are comfortable that this is a competitive price based on his discussions. He can tell you who else he may have talked to. So again, we need to replace this, it's a major component in your wastewater treatment facility. If you can imagine, Genesee Creek is just on the other side of, excuse me, the Rocky River Plant is just on the other side of Shockley Ferry, so it's a major conductor of wastewater treatment. We always, in the budget, we allocate, in the system this old, you always have funds allocated for this type of repair. And so, in this case, fortunately at this point in time, we do have the monies to replace it. So we would recommend that you award the contract, it's a negotiated contract, for option one, which is the bore, which would allow us to, to put the right kind of infrastructure in there to Morehead Construction. It's a local contractor and the price is $230,000. There could be, there is a contingency for rock, in case we don't know what's in there, no way to bore it, we get in and find out. Again, I cut to the chase on that. Jeff knows a lot more about, especially if you have questions about, is this a fair price? Is this competitive? I mean, Morehead's done a lot of work for us in both wastewater, water and storm water. We're comfortable that they can do it and they can be on it probably this week.
They said as much notice we can give them will be best, but they are ready to mobilize.
Thank you. Any, any questions for John or Jeff? Mr. Chapman.
Is, is everything from, other than what's been identified, everything else has unit prices established to it so that it...
Yes. Everything has unit prices except for some trench rock, some miscellaneous concrete we may need. Those all have, they have unit prices, but they do not have, we didn't have...
Quantities.
Quantities attached to those. I've, I've put in some placeholders and that's why Morehead's bid is around 205. I put in some placeholders for those additional items that add up to about 25,000.
Does the rock have a, have a threshold or is it a, you know, like between this and that, if it, if they hit rock?
Yeah, on, on the bore, there, it's an extra $50 a foot if they hit rock. On the trench rock, it's, it's confined by the trench width or the pipe width plus, plus some, some additional width outside of that and then whatever the depth is in this murky big yard.
All right. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Lockridge.
This is probably maybe a silly question, but what would exactly happen if the pump quit working?
No, the original, I'm sorry, the, the pipe that's there now is encased in concrete inside of the tunnel going under the railroad and Shockley Ferry. I believe that has caused moisture to be up under the pipe and in the pipe and the whole bottom of the pipe is corroded and has deteriorated and deteriorated away.
He wants to know if your...
If the pump quits working, what happens?
What happens to the sewer?
Yeah, if our emergency pump quits, we have the downstream plugged, so it will, it will overflow.
It's not gonna quit?
And we saw that in, we saw that in some of the, the one storm event we had after this, that we had to...
So we definitely need that.
Yes.
That's why I said we have someone monitoring it daily to...
Anything else?
We approve this for Morehead Construction.
I second.
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
Our last item is request consideration to purchase new utility building software, billing software. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess y'all have noticed they put all the bigger expenditures on my last meeting. They figured, they figured y'all wouldn't be too tough on me, so I thanked them for that. But these are all good moves. I mean, you know, the sewer line is certainly a piece of the infrastructure we would have done in the future and I appreciate the work, Jeff. I'm glad he was here to answer your questions. The, the utility billing software is for the Water Administration and just a little way of background, and I have Peggy and Margot's back here, have done really all the work. But in 2002, when the city purchased the water system from Duke, we had to convert to our own utility billing. They, they built it as part of the electric bill. It was very cumbersome and I thank these ladies for getting that done at that time. And this software has served us relatively well for the past 13 years, but now the company that did it really no longer supports this type of software. And it's become antiquated, doesn't offer the customer service certainly that we look for in billing our 17,000 water customers. So they began a process over a year ago in looking at billing software, again, back in 2014, they received 25 requests for proposals back. They evaluated those, narrowed them down, again, looking at what was in the packages, they, they talked to clients that were referred, they certainly evaluated the companies and then even further, this fall, they visited other sites, primarily cities that were using the software, to see it in action and talk to their people. And so they narrowed it down to these two, got quotes from the two. So this is to completely take all the data from your current system, move it into the new one, and the prices are, you can see from the BSNA, $95,910 and Tyler Technology, $98,225. These are commonly used practice of software in the utility billing industry. Now, the one thing that is not showing on here, which I think is vitally important, is currently our annual maintenance contract with CSI is $25,000 a year. That's for all the technical maintenance. With this new software, that reduces to $9,000. So you're gonna save about $16,000 a year with this software. It's state of the art, will certainly enhance our ability to, to, to do utility billing. And in that, if you do the math, in about five or six years, it will pay for itself in, in maintenance costs. So again, Margot and Peggy, you're here, this is a budgeted item in the water fund and we'd recommend that you allow us to proceed with a contract with BSNA software at $95,910.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Is that a maintenance cost or is that just their license, like, you know, like Microsoft has a license, 'cause it's identified as an annual license fee of $9,000, not a maintenance fee?
I love these people, they make it look good.
The maintenance fee is the annual fee we pay for any upgrades they have. If we have a question, problem, we can call them, you know, for your response. If that set off changes its rules of South Carolina and they have to let it update. But currently, we pay $25,000 a year to CSI and...
Is CSI, is that what CSI called their license fee?
Well, no, they call it maintenance fee. A license fee is what you would pay if you were like on a system that paid by the number of users.
See, this right here, they identified the $9,000 as the annual license fee, not a maintenance fee.
Well, that's my mis-typing, that's my Excel typing, I should have put maintenance fee.
That's equivalent to the maintenance fee.
That's why I was asking, I know the two is different licenses.
They're two different things, right. I'm sorry, that should say maintenance fee, not license fee. That's my error.
I think the software itself is the license to use that software.
I have a question.
Mr. Currie.
Help me out on this timeline, it's a little confusing to me, I'm sure there's a good answer to this, but you started looking for utility billing software in October of 2014, but then it goes, it says that you upgraded to the Harris Smart Fusion System in March of 2015. And then... of 2015 and then found out that didn't work out. Did we spend any money at that point or...
No, I'm sorry for the confusion on that, I was trying to... CSI had utility billing, our general ledger, our payroll, our accounts payable, fixed assets, all of our accounting modules. That company was bought by Harris. They had an upgrade for everything but utility billing and so we delayed our upgrade. The upgrade did not cost anything in March and the only thing, we upgraded everything but utility billing. So we had to delay our utility billing search because I also do general ledger and other functions. As I told Peggy, when we bought the system, utility billing from Duke, I had six weeks from the time we closed to the time we bought it, so we just went with CSI software. It was like an arranged marriage. This time, I've had time to record it, look, and was not rushed into a decision. So we've spent 14 months trying to find the right product that can, I believe, really enhance the city's utility system. But no, the city is on Smart Fusion for its general ledger, payroll, accounts payable checks, all of those functions.
Mr. Chapman.
The annual license fee is guaranteed for how long?
Five years. It's really maintenance fee, I apologize for the typo.
But it's guaranteed for five years and then after that?
Well, one said it's 4%, it just depends on their cost. Tyler is a major company, both are very good companies, either company we would be happy with. Tyler is a publicly traded company and they had more percentages in theirs than BSA, which is a smaller company.
Thank you. Mr. Harbin.
So are they going to be doing our total billing or are we going to be doing billing in-house now?
We're going to be doing billing in-house. What the cost on the back page are is the actual software which we have to buy. And then we have import fees where we have to get the data from Harris. Then we have data conversion. Everything we have in our current software has to be mapped into their software. And then they have the project management implementation and training fees.
So we'll just be sending out our own bills?
Well, it's just, hopefully the customers will be seamless as far as that transition, that they really won't notice the difference, except maybe the bill will look different when we go with the new company. But it's going to take eight, six to eight to 10 months, depending on the conversion, before this change goes into effect. We have to start mapping everything, it's, we have a timeline of the project.
While y'all changing everything, I mentioned this before, but it just kind of went through the air, but if, I'd love to see us change the outside of the envelope for the bill that's sent.
Okay.
So instead of saying utility notice, which makes you think your water's fixing to get cut off, it says utility statement.
Okay.
Something like that.
That's an easy change. You know, this can do...
Every time I see that, I think immediately, Sandra didn't pay the water bill.
We, this company, I mean, you can scan applications and attach it to a customer so we don't have to keep paper copy files of applications. We can attach, if you have an obstruction, instead of us having to stop, type a letter and send it, you can send it right from the system. You can have form letters in there that says, oh, this customer had an obstruction, meaning when she's downloading the routes and the meter reader puts that in there, can immediately hit this, a form letter goes out and sends it to a customer, or if they're an e-bill customer, it'll email them right away. I mean, there's so many things that, I mean, we were like a kid in a candy store, but I mean, all the companies had a lot of positives, but we tried to narrow it down, went and visited cities, talked with the actual users, how did the actual implementation go, how did it actually work, what would you change, you know, what company, and a lot of the cities we talked to narrowed it down to these two companies as well.
They liked that personal touch.
That personal touch.
But I guess also, you mentioned the online experience was very cumbersome, you know, the online payment.
Yes.
And I guess now we'll be able to opt in to not wasting the city's money on billing as far as e-bills.
E-bills and e-notices, all that kind of thing.
Thanks. Anything else?
I'm excited about it, so I really think I'll prove either or, but I'll put in for BSNA, but...
Thank you, Margot.
We can test y'all on our test bills if you want. Statement, sorry, I got to get used to that, utility statement.
We know how much you love talking in front of us.
I know.
One more, Ms. Roberts? Motion?
Oh, thank you.
First by Mr. John Roberts.
Well, you're proving the...
Second by Dr. Thompson.
BSNA, I guess, right?
Yes.
Yes. BSNA, further discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? BSA package software from Lansing, Michigan, passage unanimously. One last time, administrative briefing, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Margot too and all of Jeff and Kerry, obviously from your staff, there's a lot of knowledge that helps city manager look pretty good. Yeah, and I also second, yeah, Margot said, please, I don't want to have to say anything. But once she got up here, she got rolling, didn't she? She'll get on me tomorrow about that, so. Hey, just a couple of things, you have the count, but the main two things of business, there won't be another council meeting this month. The main two things of business will be in next week. We do have on the 16th, the finance committee, and of course, remember, a committee meeting is public, you're always welcome to attend. That'll be at noon. I would say if you attend, we usually have some light lunch, so let Peggy know in this case. And this will be the committee's view of the audit. And I'll go ahead and tell you, it's very good. So thanks to Peggy and Margot and all the people out here who maintain their financials, so that'll be the good news, but the auditor gets to tell the committee first and then in January, he'll share that with the council. I think the other good news is on the 17th, we will begin to, we're organizing, we've identified a number of unsafe substandard housing, houses, the committee will look at those. Again, you're all welcome. We plan to have one of our transit buses and actually, we're not going to go look at all of them, but there's about 30 on this initial list to see if this is a direction you'd like to go. I think the committee's already said, yes, we do need to clean up our neighborhoods. And again, what we want to do is actually let you see them on the ground, a few of them, and then help us prioritize that list. So that's going to be the kind of workings of that day, okay? So those are the two things we have, Mr. Mayor, and nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Harbin.
Tomorrow night at Carolina Renn Park.
Yes.
My family and I have been able to come to a couple of them and they do a fantastic job and I think the community really, really enjoys it and also we've ice skated on several occasions and enjoying the work that Mr. Bevel and his crew are doing, making it very hospitable for our city.
Good deal. I always say it's been the councils to recognize, we say we have a scout and what troop, tell us what troop you're from.
I'm from troop 210 out of Powdersville.
Okay, great, great. I thank you, the first Powdersville troop that's ever been in the council. Thank you for coming. Good. I would, as we close the meeting, I just would wish everybody in the audience and those watching us to have a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year coming up. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.